Nineteen. We could start, thirty seconds. How will I know when we're on?
We're just waiting for TV eighteen's queue, Mayor, about fifteen more seconds.
No, that's fine. How will I know that? You'll tell me?
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Oh, no, you won't. On your phone, it doesn't show you to save space. It'll give you the test picture before you connect and then it goes away.
We on?
Get confirmation now. All right, you're on, Mayor.
Very good, very good. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to, oh, good, you did hear me. Like to call to order the Mayor Commission Budget Work Session. Today is May twenty-six, twenty-twenty, and the time is ten oh-two AM. And Ms. Johnson, I will turn this over to you for item number one. Twenty-twenty-one General Fund Tentative Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, members of the commission as well as the staff.
Where are you?
We are in the planning open area, which is where I'm doing the presentation from.
Because I cannot see you.
I'm sorry?
I can't see you.
I know, but you can. We have it set up so that you can't see me, but you'll be able to hear me and see the presentation.
Okay, very good, very good.
Yeah, so this is a new setup in terms of our virtual meetings. I am doing the presentation from the planning open area. Joining me to assist in the presentation is our Finance Director, Mark Parks, our Assistant Finance Director, Sophia Taylor, and our Budget Manager, Linda McDermott. We are also joined by a number of the staff who are with us this morning. So before I get started, I want to just thank the city staff across the board for their efforts in putting together their FY twenty-one base budget. So in terms of how we got to where we are today, in terms of the timeline. In case I want to start the panel. They're with us? Want to make certain that you all can see the PowerPoint?
Yes, we can.
So as a quick walkthrough from a timeline perspective on how we got to where we are. Back on the thirtieth of March, we kicked off the FY twenty-one budget process. Then on the twenty-fourth of April, the department submitted their FY twenty-one base budgets under the direction that those budgets be either flat, meaning no operational increases, or reduced. Between April twenty-eighth and the thirtieth, I held budget reviews with the departments. And beginning on May first, really up until this weekend, administration and finance staff have been reviewing the follow-up information from the budget reviews and preparing for today's work session. Last week, as part of the mayor's executive team meeting, we had a focused discussion on our fiscal year twenty-one budget outlook. And that brings us to where we are today, here for this budget work session. So my way of just a quick overview and intro. As the mayor and commission and staff, everyone is aware, the general fund really is the mainstay of our budget revenues. It is our largest fund, and it currently totals one hundred and ninety million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. And I need for everyone to really lock into that number because that's the basis on which our FY twenty-one budget will be set. That hundred and ninety million excludes transfers and carryforward dollars. As our chief operating fund, it includes our core services such as police, fire, recreation, library, sanitation, engineering, and then a complement of general government operations, including administration, legal, HR, and finance. So in terms of our revenue mix, there are four primary revenue sources in order in terms of how much they bring into our coffers. We have our property tax revenue, the various charges for services. And that includes things like our garbage collection fees, recycling fees, and there is a component in that category for admin fees that we charge to the CRA and utilities for the support from the general fund. The next category of revenues is the intergovernmental charges. And that includes revenue from the half-set sales tax, our state revenue sharing, as well as our pilot revenue payment in lieu of taxes that the parking fund pays into the general fund as well as utilities. That fourth category of other taxes includes revenue generated from our electric utility tax as well as water community communication services taxes as well as our business taxes. So if we look at by category, how the revenue from those four categories are distributed. It goes primarily for personnel services, which is very typical. The largest cost with most, if not all municipalities, is your personnel. That's the employees that keep our operation running. The next category is material and services. And that category includes items such as equipment, our supplies, various contractual services. The next category is internal service charges. And those are charges for things like the radio system, our phone system. We have also in there our general and auto liability costs as well as computer maintenance. And then the last category where that revenue goes is our debt service. So if we look at how that revenue is distributed by program, public safety gets the majority of the revenues as the city's top priority. It aligns with getting the lion's share of the revenue. Public safety includes police, fire, EMS, as well as code enforcement. And then the general government, because that's where you have the host of operational complements, followed by recreation and culture, which is really library, parks and recreation. And then the physical environment, inclusive of sanitation, engineer, and then a small component for Channel eighteen. I've already highlighted the fact that public safety is the city's top priority. I do want to footnote how that funding impacts what we get in our tax revenues. So it's very important for everyone to have a good handle on where we are now. Because as we look at FY twenty-one, that sets the foundation for how we will develop the FY twenty-one budget. So just by way of a quick overview, and I'm not going to go through all of this in details, it is detailed out in the budget book. And I know that it is available for everyone to take a look at it. If you need to study it in more detail so that you will be completely up to speed as we look at FY twenty-one, we will be available to answer any detailed questions about it. But in terms of the operating revenues of the hundred and ninety-plus million, property taxes generate the lion's share of our revenue based on our current mileage of eight-point-three-four-six-five. We have held that mileage rate since fiscal year twenty-thirteen. And then you see the other hosts of revenues that make up that hundred and ninety million. Again, we don't include transfers and cash carryforward because that's not new money coming into our coffers. Again, that just shows if you back out the cash carryforward and the transfers, what the incoming revenues into our operating budget equates to. And again, that one hundred and ninety million plus, you're going to hear that number over and over again. Hopefully, it would be seared in everyone's understanding. And then for reference, I've just included the detail from the budget book. You can find that revenue detail on page one hundred and four in the budget book for your reference. And then this is a pictoria of how that revenue looks if you were looking at it graphically.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
You made reference to the budget book. Have those been distributed? I don't know if I've got mine.
I believe they should have been distributed. So we will make certain that, Mayor, you have yours as well as members of the commission and staff, but they have been distributed.
Please confirm that. Thank you.
You're very welcome. So if we move on, and I'm going to spend a little time on this particular slide. This is another item that we need to make certain that as an organization, we fully understand it because it affects how we budget, and it certainly is going to be an issue that we will grapple with for our FY twenty-one budget. Our total budget for FY twenty, the fiscal year we're in, is that hundred and ninety-plus million. That hundred and ninety million has a built-in vacancy allowance of the four-point-two-for-talking purposes million-dollar number. That built-in vacancy allowance, what it is, is a reduction to the personnel and salary benefit appropriations that accounts for the time that departments project their positions are going to be vacant. So theoretically, based on the eleven-hundred-and-fifty-seven positions in the general fund that the board approved, by appropriation, the total operating budget should be one hundred and ninety-four million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and five. But because of this budgeting practice, one that I don't embrace, we have that four-point-one-million-dollar reduction that gives us the hundred and ninety million. Now, a vacancy allowance is a practice that is commonly used in municipalities. In my experience, I've always used it at the beginning of a position being approved by an elected body. So, for example, if the board were to approve new positions for FY twenty-one, it is common practice that you project out how long it's going to take you to bring that new position online. And then you budget for maybe three-quarters of the fiscal year. But in the ensuing years, under my practice and experience, you fully budget for those positions. Because it's very hard to tell based on a number of factors when a department will actually bring all those positions online. And if we look at our specific situation, the police department is a very good example. The police department had a one-point-five-million-dollar reduction to their personnel category based on the projection of how long it would take them to fill the thirteen-plus vacant positions. Chief Adely and Chief Morris have been focusing on bringing those positions online. And to their credit, they have now filled those positions. So looking forward to FY twenty-one, we had a couple of options. The FY twenty-one budget would have automatically been increased by the one-point-five million when theoretically that funding should have been in their budget. So moving forward for FY twenty-one, under the direction that I gave, they had to find somewhere within their budget a one-point-five-million-dollar reduction in order to balance their flat budget for FY twenty-one. They did that out of their overtime line. However, it remains to be seen whether they are going to be able to operate with overtime budget, reduced budget of one-point-five million. So from my perspective, that built-in vacancy allowance to balance a budget creates an artificially balanced budget. In talking with the mayor about this practice, he agreed that we should dispense with that practice and fully fund the appropriated positions that are approved by the board. To the extent that we can for FY twenty-one, we're going to do that. But as I get to the other part of the presentation, the board is going to see how much of a challenge that will become. Because we had other departments, for example, Parks and Recreation had a half-a-million-dollar built-in vacancy allowance. And whether or not they can really absorb that through cuts, again, that remains to be seen. So that vacancy allowance is a practice that we absolutely have to completely dispense with.
So are you saying, Ms. Johnson, that basically these departments will have to find four-point-one-million dollars in cuts from their flat budget?
You are absolutely right.
Okay. A question from Commissioner Lambert on that item.
Thank you, Mayor. And you asked the question that I was going to clarify as well. And just to follow up on that, Ms. Johnson, so you're saying, had we continued with this practice, that's where the four-point-one million would come into play. But it is your recommendation that we not follow that practice?
That is correct. And if I could just jump ahead and then I'll jump back. So if we continue with this practice, where it becomes a challenge is if departments were allowed for the FY twenty-one budget to load up the funding for all of the positions the board approved. They would have loaded their budgets, which would have totaled the hundred and ninety-four-point-five million. So if you look at that four-point-two million related to the built-in vacancy, if you fast forward to what we think we're going to have in revenue of that six million, four million would have come off the top. So then you're looking at only two million dollars of revenue to fund the various items that we are going to be challenged with funding. If they did not reduce their FY twenty-one budget to absorb that four-point-two million, it would have automatically increased your FY twenty-one budget off the top. So we could do that as an option, or we can continue with this vacancy allowance, which again, I can't support doing that because if we look at police as the prime example, they have now filled their vacant positions. So theoretically, their budget should increase automatically by that one-point-five million because based on appropriations, the board approved that amount of money for their budget some time back. And so we can't continue to be in a position where we have appropriations funded at a certain level, then do a vacancy allowance, and then try to have departments manage when they're going to bring it online. And year after year, I have to come to the board for an automatic increase in the budget when it should have been part of funding based on appropriations.
So if we swallow, Ms. Johnson, if we swallow this bitter peel in the upcoming budget year, you don't anticipate we will have such a major hurdle to overcome in subsequent?
Right, not for that particular situation. No, we will not. I think that we're probably going to have some of that for FY twenty-one based on how realistic departments can absorb their portion of the vacancy allowance. And again, not picking on police, but I have to use them because they are a prime example. That one-point-five million that came out of overtime, Chief Adely and Chief Morris have already started working very hard on how they can bring their overtime number down. But just based on the trend, it was trending up. So to then cut it back by one-point-five million, I mean, that's going to be a Yuma's task to try to trend it down and then reduce it by the one-point-five million. So I'm braced that we may have to bring some of that one-point-five million back into the budget. And then that's going to be an additional budget challenge.
Okay, all right. I do have a couple of questions before you move on from that. Madam President Schoeff has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator Johnson. I'm very conscious that we have a lot of departments working hard and that we still, as a city, are going to have needs. Case in point, public safety, we're going to still need police officers and firefighters and, you know, our first responders. And there would be positions to fill. In this four-point-two number, have we narrowed that down to positions that are absolutely necessary to fill in looking at the time where we're still kind of in an ever-changing environment nationally and globally? Have we looked at that four-point-two number, again, recognizing that we will need to hire people, we still have a city to run? Have we looked at that number to say, this is the absolute number? Or is there some flexibility in that number to say there are positions that would be kind of in the triage of these are primary positions that need to be filled and these are secondary positions that could be filled?
We've done it somewhat. So what we've done is we've taken that four-point, and I'm going to use four-point-two million for talking purposes, and distributed it among the departments, again, using police as the example. The one-point-five million from their personnel budget, we absolutely know they need all of that because they need to have officers on the street. And those positions have been filled. So we've answered that question on those thirteen vacancies, they are needed. When we look at Parks and Rec, the almost half of a million there, we have not gone through the process of looking at the vacant positions. And the Parks and Rec director probably can speak more to this, and I'll have that follow-up discussion. But looking at the positions that relate to that half-a-million-dollar number for Parks and Rec, doing an analysis on if these positions have been vacant for whatever period of time, you know, is it because of the market, we're priced out, we're not competitive? Then begging the question, how has the work been performed? And if we've still been getting the work done, are we in a position now to just eliminate those positions? Looking at where we think we're going to be in FY twenty-one, we may come to have to eliminate the vacant positions out of the budget. But I've not done that across the board. That is part of what you're going to discuss as we move into fiscal year twenty-one discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fox had a question on the vacancy allowance.
Thank you so much. I was just curious, when these positions become vacant, is there a reason that those positions are taken out of the budget in the first place? In other words, we're calling it an allowance now, but why, let's say if we needed a hundred positions in the police department, why wouldn't that number just be kept in the budget as positions that were going to be filled rather than now looking like it's extra, an allowance, you know, that we're calling it rather than just the jobs that were already there?
You asked the question that I asked of staff as I tried to get up to speed on this. But let me be clear, the positions themselves were not taken out of the budget. Part of the funding for the position was reduced. So if the police personnel budget was thirty million, it was reduced by the one-point-five million. So the departments and finance, or finance independent of the departments, looked at the department's trend on filling positions. And if it took them six months, they reduced the personnel and benefit budget by six months. You know, to absorb, to allow for that time that the position would be vacant, but the position itself was not completely eliminated or cut from the budget. So it reduced the funding for the positions, not the elimination of the position.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Johnson, as you continue to get those reports and dig deeper into each of the departments to determine whether those positions have been filled or not, will we get to see those reports as well as part of this budget review process?
Certainly, that information will be made available to the commission. What you will also see as we move through this process, you will see as part of the presentation how departments who were impacted by the four-point-two million actually addressed it. So you will see it on a department-by-department basis. You can certainly have the reports that would detail it out. We will make the department directors available for any follow-up discussion that we need to have. But you will see that on a number of levels as we move through this process.
Thank you.
Okay, continue, Ms. Johnson. It's all the questions we have up to this point.
All right, I'll move right on. So what is before you? This is directly from your budget book. That's on page one hundred and twenty-three. If you want to mark that for reference to go back through it and look at the detail, that's on the expenditures. Again, that's a graph that just shows what we've already talked about. The lion's share of our expenditures relate to personnel and then the various categories. If you're looking at it in terms of a pie chart, that's what it looks like. And then that shows it by programs. So that is the overview for FY twenty-one. Again, some of the critical points that we need to make certain that we have a clear understanding of is what our base operating budget is, that hundred and ninety-three-seventy-eight-six-twenty-five. And then how the four-point-two million vacancy allowance affects how we're going to or affects the challenges we're going to deal with for FY twenty-one. So I'm going to pause here to make certain that we are all clear before I move on to FY twenty-one. Here and now, I'll move on. So as we look at where we're headed in establishing a new baseline for FY twenty-one, again, our revenues and expenditures have to balance. We balance our expenditures based on the revenues that we have coming in each fiscal year. And looking at property taxes, which is the largest source of revenue based on staff projections, we anticipate that we're going to generate additional property tax revenue of eleven-point-one or eleven-point-two million. The portion of that eleven-point-two million that relates to the BRISA is five-point-four million. And I want to highlight that five-point-four million in that, based on conversation throughout the organization, there is a false expectation that the BRISA was going to bring in hundreds of millions of dollars into the city coffers. And we will be flush with tax revenue, general fund revenue, to really fund a host of additional items, take care of all of the bank needs that had not been funded. take care of all of the bank needs that had not been funded. And that is simply not the case. Again, the 11.2 million is what is projected. Of that, 5.4 million is projected to come from the Bristol. It is a boost to our tax base, but it is not, as has been indicated, in terms of the millions, hundreds of millions of revenue that it will bring into the general fund. And it's important that everyone understands that.
Ms. Johnson, when will we get a final read on the property taxes coming in?
On June 1st, deputorally, the property appraiser is required to release the preliminary values for FY21. So we will get those next Monday, and then the final values will be released on July 1st. So next Monday, we will know how close we are in terms of what the values will be for FY21 and the tax revenue based on that 11.2 million. We will readjust that number based on the preliminary values from the property appraiser.
All right, very good. Before you move on, I've got a question from Madam President Schoeff on property taxes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator. I was just curious if we had had any conversations with the county in looking at upcoming, you know, property taxes being due, where a lot of times we have many people paying property taxes early due to economies of 2020. We might have property taxes being paid later or perhaps being delayed and late or not at all as things kind of change in this situation. Have we had conversations with the county to understand what that may look like or what would happen in the case of later non-accidents?
Mr. Fox indicated he has, so I'm going to let him weigh in.
So I did, I talked to the tax collector's office to get a read on any challenges that they saw moving forward. And what they said is the majority of the taxes are paid through mortgages. So even if people were having challenges, the banks tend to step in to pay those taxes so that they don't have a liability on the properties that they own. The other people who tend to pay their taxes outright normally are a little more financially secure, have that money on hand. So there was no indication of any immediate drop in the collectibility of the taxes for this year.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
So in essence, what they've indicated is that the banks will cover property taxes for this year, but there is admittedly a place down the road where we're going to have to take a look at this to say there may be an event that taxes would not be collected in some way, shape, or form. And I don't know if there's, you know, a collective experience from this body of something that occurred similarly during the downturn in 2008, et cetera. And I don't think that there's an answer for it today. I think maybe it's just something we need to keep in mind. I know we're going to go into where we think, you know, COVID will have a financial impact from license fees and permits, et cetera. I think we should just keep that in mind as it pertains to property taxes going down the line because that bill will come due somewhere down the line as all of our economies are connected.
Just based on the readings that I've done in terms of the property taxes, I think city managers and administrators are braced that the COVID-19 impact on property taxes will hit us for fiscal year '22. Because property taxes are set based on the values of January 1st, which occurred before COVID-19 hit. You know, we are cautiously optimistic that what we're projected, you know, will stay intact. But in the ensuing year, based on all of the guidance that the city managers have received, there is an expectation that COVID-19 may impact property tax values or payments for fiscal year '22. And that's something that we certainly have to keep, you know, our eye on. Linda, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, absolutely. We've done several different analyses. So let's say '22 brings us like the beginning of when we had the recession. It brought us down 4% to 5% one year. So if you look at that into '22, we could face a $4 million reduction. And we are hoping, of course, that after some of this COVID, things start happening again in our community. We're fortunate in West Palm to have such a variety of buildings. But if we did go like the recession did, we could face a $4 million reduction in '22.
So we're going to follow that very closely and keep the board apprised of how that's trending.
And that's going to be more from a depreciation of the values of the property, not necessarily an increased default rate in the tax payments, correct?
Yes, but there may, yes, I think is the answer. But there may also be an impact because depending on the economy and when folks get back to work, even though the banks will step in and pay property taxes, I think conceivably we could have a higher rate of delinquent taxpayers. So I think we should expect that we may have a combination of the two, Mayor.
Okay.
While we went through the recession, we did get up to $2 million that we collected in our property tax delinquent, but we did collect them. Like Mark was saying, the mortgagees come and pay. It may be a little late, but we did collect on them. So our biggest thing is having sometimes a one-year delay till we get that additional delinquent. The city usually collects it. It's just that variance in one year could make a very big difference in our operating budget, what we have available to continue with staff and everything.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. I don't see any other questions, so continue.
Okay, so the next part of the revenue impact is directly related to COVID-19. We're at this particular point, and this is a snapshot in time, we're projecting that we're going to have a $5 million revenue reduction in those various items related to COVID-19. So based on that projection at this point, if in fact it is 5 million, it would reduce the overall revenue, general fund revenue coming into the budget for FY21 down to 6.1 or 6.2 million.
Now, Ms. Johnson, that 5 million is all general revenue monies?
Yes, that's general fund, and I'll let Budget weigh in here. But when you look at the fact that part of our revenues relate to sales tax and then the state revenue sharing, we're interdependent. So where the state experience a drop in revenue that they share with municipalities, that's automatically going to be a drop in what we would receive. When you look at businesses related to licenses and permits, that revenue goes into our general fund coffers. Given how we're being impacted, that causes a dip in our revenue stream from the various sources that go into that category. And Budget, if you want to speak specifically about some of the line items?
Yes, absolutely. So for 2020, since the impact has hit us through the April and moving forward, we won't see anything with a property tax because thankfully we've taken in the majority of those. Our charges for services are estimating about a $1 million hit. Now, what that includes is recreation cannot have summer camp, cannot have, we didn't have the Sun Fest, we didn't have all those major things that we have downtown that allows us to bring in additional funds. However, we still have the expense of personnel from events. Recreation has been working to help the feeding and the homeless and such, so they haven't really reduced their personnel during this because we are utilizing them for community service. Also, we have some intergovernmental, as you know, local sales tax. The malls are not open, restaurants are not open, businesses. That is going to be major. That can be anywhere between a $2 million to $4 million. So we went in between our estimates. Licenses and permits, luckily, our building and permitting has significant reserves, plus Rick has done an excellent job, and they've already brought in 90% of their revenues for this year. So we won't feel the impact this year for building, but we will next year. And he has appropriately adjusted his budget and revenue and expenses. Additionally, we have other taxes such as there's utility tax, gas tax, electric tax, just a variety of penalties on business taxes. Those are minimal, but that could be up to $300,000, $400,000 reduction. We have interest that we were doing quite well. Thank you, Mark and David. We'll be able to weather the storm on some of that, but we may take a little bit of a hit, maybe $300,000 on that. But we're doing very well. Fines and forfeitures, because we're not doing parking tickets because no one's parking downtown, that impacts the school crossing guards, believe it or not. They get $2 from every ticket. And that helps them, you know, staff, uniforms, raises, that took a dip. So, yeah. So that's the main, the main one is going to be the sales tax, state revenue taxes and such like that.
Let me just ask a question because I thought I read something, guidance from the state saying municipalities should anticipate, was it a 20% drop?
It's 25 for March when it first kind of started, 50 for April.
Okay, so state is putting out guidance on what we should anticipate in terms of the drop in the state share of revenue.
Okay. Thank you. Proceed.
So we'll move on. So we use the 6.2 million for talking purposes now as our net revenue coming into the general fund for fiscal year '21. And look at how, at this point, we're projecting to use that additional revenue. So we have some costs that we are legally obligated to pay. We have health insurance increase of about 5.4%. We have binding contracts that have a 3% escalator built into them. Then we have certain required staff costs, and I'm going to go through the details, but this is at the 30-foot level. And then we have some operational mandates. That, those various items total 5.7 million. So that would leave us with only 440,000 remaining revenue to budget, which is woefully insufficient given what we need to be looking at funding for next year.
Before you move on, Madam President Schoeff has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, when we're speaking here, we're talking about additional revenues over last year. So is the assumption that the same uses for the revenues of last year will be those exact same uses? I guess I'm trying to get some clarity in that. I understand we have, what you're lining out here is obligations that are already built and that will use up that additional. But I think that relies on the assumption that every cost that we had for revenues that equaled up until last year without the addition would be used for those exact same uses.
That is correct.
Maybe jumping ahead, okay.
Yeah, you're doing both. You're correct in your assumption, and we have to operate on that assumption because at this point, the board has not directed us to change how revenues are used. You may get to that. So we have to operate on the assumption of how revenues were distributed this year. That's the base for how they would be distributed for FY21 until and when the board takes action to do otherwise. And you're going to get to some of that discussion later on in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So this relates solely to the additional revenue that we're projecting at this point to bring into the coffers for FY21.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, and that's because we'd adopted a balanced budget last year with that 190 million dollar number, correct?
That is correct.
So, you know, we're assuming that that 190 million dollar budget is going to carry over into the next budget unless we make some changes.
That is correct.
Okay.
Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. So given that we only have, based on the 6.2 million, we only have enough to cover those items that were listed. These are the items that would not be covered in the FY21 budget. That 196 million does not include the 3% cost of living adjustment that is typically given for employees. It does not include the 5% step cost for police and fire. It includes or does not allow for any money to be put on the table for union negotiations. We again are anticipating having an increase in overtime for police and fire, which could not be absorbed out of the 196.5 million dollar estimated budget or revenue for next year. Continuing on to our one-time capital cost, it would not allow for any funding for vehicle replacement and equipment, and you see the dollar amounts there. We have paving needs out at the complex. The police department submitted a federal grant for 30 police officers. Our match, if we were to get it, would be 1.1 million. Fire did the same for the safest grant for 28 firefighters. The match would be 700,000. The one-time capital needs would be 5.6 million. Our revenue stream of the 6.2 million does not allow for funding of those items. I'll pause.
I don't see any additional questions, so proceed.
Okay, so again, the FY21 flat revenues, based on where we are right now, the 193.78625 million, looking at that additional tax revenue of 11 million, this is just reviewing, the 5.4 million related to the Bristol, and you see what our three-year trend had been prior to FY21. Netting out the revenue with the losses, giving us that additional 6.2 million, it then brings our adjusted revenue figure for FY21 to 196,538,625. Now, in terms of those items that I had rolled up, here are the details of what that 5.7 million consists of. As I mentioned, the health planning is projected to increase by 5.4%. We have liability claims that we are anticipating an increase there. So the combination of the two and the lion's share of that is the health plan would be 825,000. The contractual binding commitments that we have, the 765,000, I don't want to get to this, I want to get to the detail. This is small, so I hope you can see that on the screen. The health insurance plan, that 5.4%, is 620,000 of that 825. The liability claims is the 205,000, and that makes up the 825. On the contractual obligations, that 765,000 includes the Pioneer Park Monument. In that, the board approved, and we have a binding agreement for the city's contribution for 65,000. It was actually supposed to be init- It was actually supposed to be in this year's budget. We went through the budget with the fine tooth comb. The money was not in there. They're ready to start that project. Based on discussion that the mayor had with them, they agreed to push it back to next year, trying to give the city time to bring its obligated commitment to the table. The 700,000 reflects the contracts, and those are just some examples of contracts. That is not the totality of the contracts. But we have contracts on things for cleaning services, our computers, the elevators, air conditioning, and it makes up that 700,000. Staff is in the process of following up with vendors to see if we can negotiate either out or down that 3% escalator that's in the contracts. How successful we'll be on that will be determined as we move forward. But I think realistically, we should expect that we're not going to be able to negotiate out that entire 700,000. The next item in terms of requiring personnel expenses, the board approved certain progressions for certain positions within our general fund. That was not in the budget this year, so we need to bring it into the budget for next year. That's a $300,000 hit. We have the SAFER grant for 15 firefighters that we've come to the end of that grant, and so it now transfers over to the general fund. That's what the 488,000 represents. Based on the actuary study for police, we have a pension expense of about 930,000. And then we have several police officers that are at the end of their 30-year tenure and are required to retire. That payout equates to about 430,000. On the operational side, we have an anticipated increase in water and utilities of about 300,000. And in these last two items under operational items. Right now, we have a situation over at the complex where the gates have been inoperable for several fiscal years. We have been managing that by having security guards there at the tune of 228,000 and have spent approximately 600-some thousand over the past fiscal years, while we accumulate incrementally the money that we need to just repair the gates so that we don't have to use security guards. So what I propose here is that we budget that 250,000 to give us what we need to fix the gates and dispense with the security guards. Because when you look at it over the fiscal years, what we're paying annually, we're going to pay out almost in totality what it would have cost us to just repair the gates. And from a fiscal standpoint, that's just not good fiscal management, from my perspective. The last item is the waterfront fund deficit. Our budget manager intimated what we're experiencing there, where we don't have the events coming in, but we still have the staff. We're anticipating a 1.2 million deficit to President Schof's question about what would be utilized with the revenue. You know, if the board, as we move forward, indicate for the waterfront fund, because we don't have the events, we want to reduce the staff accordingly, that 1.2 million goes away because it would then be staff reduction through the elimination of programs. But until and when you give me that direction, I am anticipating that you're going to want to keep that particular fund intact so that when the economy turns around, we would have the staff in place. So again, that's the detail of what that 5.7 million dollars relate to. And I'll pause here.
Before you move off that slide, Commissioner Lambert has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was actually on a slide, two slides before. So I'll hold that because I see that there's some questions on this slide while this one's fresh.
All right, Commissioner Fox, you have a question?
Thank you. I just had a quick question regarding the security guard complex gates. I was wondering if the cost for the security was already in the budget. In other words, if we were going to fix the gates and then eliminate those positions of security, do we already have a line item for that security where we would be kind of trading out this amount?
I'm going to ask Budget to chime in on this. It's my understanding that we had the funding for the security guards up to a certain point. This year, I believe it was the real estate division that actually found 200,000 or allocated 200. It's no found money, so let me retract that word. We don't have any found money. The real estate division within housing and community development allocated 200,000 of their funds to pick up that cost for the security guards over at the complex. It is split between the general fund and utilities. That represents the general fund portion. We are not anticipating that the real estate division can continue to do that from their budget. So we are now proposing to include it in the FY '21 budget.
So we're going to have the 228 for the guards and another 250 for the repairs to the complex gates?
The 250 would be what we need to give us the total that we're projecting for that project. And I believe that total for the project is...
The project ends up being around 650. They did start the project, and something happened with the original vendor. So there was a delay there. And we had to add another 220, and now we need another 250. So it's mounting up to a little over 650 for the project itself.
All right, but let me ask you something. Is the 228,000 for the security guards a full year? Or just a portion of the year that's necessary before the gates are operative?
It is for a full year. So the question becomes whether or not we will have the system in place and operable before the end of the year. And if so, then that reduces what we would have to pay from that 228.
All right, but we got a budget for the full year in case that's not the case. I understand.
That is the case, yes.
All right. Now, Commissioner Lambert, do you want to go back to... I don't see any other questions on this slide. So you had a question on a previous slide?
I did, Mayor. Yes, Ms. Johnson, actually, two slides before when it's the adjusted revenue, the 196 million, yes. I was just wondering if you could go over this because you imprinted on my mind so vividly the importance of the 190 million dollar amount. And so now I just want to know where we got, how we got to 201.
Okay, the 193.78, 6.25 was what we have in income and revenue right now for FY '20, the fiscal year that we're in. It increases for next year to the 196 because we're adding in the 6.2 million dollars that we are projecting with net revenue. Once we look at the 11.2 from the property tax and the 5 million that we're projecting to lose, that gives us a net revenue of 6.2. So if you add that to the 193.78, that brings us to the 196 for fiscal year 21.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
Okay, proceed. I don't see any other questions this time.
Thank you. Let's see, where was I? Okay, again, that just shows, based on that 196, 538, 625, how the revenues would be or are proposed to be distributed at this point. And you just see by category, increase the personnel and the material and services line item for the most part. Again, this just details out what would not be covered based on net revenue of 6.1, 6.2 million. So we look at that top category, that's about 2.4 million for cost of living and step increases. What would be put on the table for union negotiations, that dollar price is still to be determined. Overtime estimating, excuse me, about 2.6 million. And then in capital, rounded, that would be about 5.6 million that would not be covered based on what we are projecting in additional revenue.
Yeah, and go back a slide because you even have a dollar amount connected to the union negotiations.
Right, because at this point...
We have no idea what those are going to be like.
Right. And we have, we're in negotiations with all four unions. We have three-year contracts that are expiring at the end of this fiscal year, and the intent is to renegotiate new three-year contracts with all four unions.
Okay. We got a question from Commissioner Nering.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Johnson. So is it, and I'm sure you're getting to this, this question may be in the presentation, given that the 196 million does not cover these items, which are probably roughly 10-plus million dollars in unfunded or not covered, is it, as it has been in the past, a practice to go back to the different departments as a percentage to come off their overall budget? Like, again, I feel like I'm asking this question before you get to it, and I'm sure you're going to address it, which is, how then do we or what is the plan to address these items that are not covered?
That is one approach that can be taken. The approach that we end up taking will depend on what kind of input I get from the mayor and the board. The bottom line is that we're going to have to go back to departments unless the policy direction is, based on the 196 with the items that are covered, that's all we want to deal with. Everything that's not covered will not be covered. We don't want you to go back and look at departments. I don't think that's going to be the policy direction, but I'm your administrator, and I don't want to step into the shoes of the board.
Follow-up, Commissioner Nering?
Yeah, I want to be clear. I just threw that as, and I agree with you on that. I think too that, you know, going back and asking departments to continue to cut puts you in a not-so-good position. It's definitely not what I'm suggesting. However, the reality is, as we look at these numbers, these are very important items that have to be covered in some way or another. So it sounds like there'll be lots of discussion about how we ultimately get there. So thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Clearly, we have our work cut out for us. Okay, Ms. Johnson, continue. I don't see any other questions at this time.
Thank you. Moving on. We've already gone through that detail. So that brings us to our challenge, and that is to determine, you know, how we're going to fund the priority operational needs and address union negotiations. And looking at that, just looked at some pivotal actions that we need to, or we're in the midst of undertaking as we speak. Hiring freeze on any vacant positions, and then look at vacant positions that need to be filled on a case-by-case basis. There may be some exceptions strategically that we have to make, but effective as I am speaking, we're going to put a hiring freeze on vacant positions. We don't want to hire at this point if we're going to be in a position where we're then cutting positions to balance for FY '21. The travel freeze was put in place sometime back. We're going to keep that in place as well as the training freeze. Now, with certain training, particularly for public safety, that training needs to take place, so an exception will be made there. But outside of public safety, we'll be looking at any training requests on a case-by-case basis and making that exception. Where that helps us is that, to the extent that we don't spend money in this year's budget, we have that funding to help us absorb the increases that we're incurring right now for COVID-19 in terms of having purchased supplies and what have you. And I know that we anticipate getting reimbursed from the federal government, but that money is going to come in down the road. So we'll be able to absorb that within the operating budget and not have to go into our emergency reserves or into the unassigned fund balance reserve. We are anticipating having an overtime increase for this current fiscal year from FIRE of about 1.5 million because of the fact that FIRE bought Engine 1 back into operation, did not get denied new positions to fund that particular engine, and are doing it on overtime. That's a hit to the general fund budget. If we're not able to absorb it through cost savings, that's going to be a hit to the unassigned fund balance. And you'll see what that number is on a couple of later slides. So at the end of this fiscal year, if we're able to absorb those increases and have any unassigned fund balance remaining, then that would be used toward FY '21. Conceivably, it could be allocated to some of the one-time capital costs because theoretically, that's what you use fund balance for the one-time capital and not to fund ongoing expenses. And I'll pause here in case there are questions.
I don't see any at this time.
Okay, moving on to actions that we're looking at for FY '21, and there are a host of actions. Again, as was mentioned, June 1st, next Monday, we will get the preliminary values from the property appraisers, so we will refine that tax revenue. And we may be surprised. It may be higher than the 11.2 million. So if that is the case, that gives us a little more revenue that we will have coming into the operating budget. We are continuing to calculate the COVID-19 losses. We're going to continue to refine those numbers and recalculate it. We will inform the board of what that projection looks like. We're going to update the operating budget. Right now, we're looking at that operating budget of 196 million. As part of the base budget, we had some incremental decreases that have not yet been reconciled. For example, the mayor's budget, because the mayor started restructuring administration, I think at the point that I was tapped to be interim and then certainly when I became the city administrator, to not fill the two assistant city administrators' positions, Scott Kelly's old position and my old position. We are continuing to do restructuring and administration. Right now, the mayor's budget is down almost a half a million. So we're going to reconcile that. Finance has probably about a $200,000 incremental decrease. We had an agenda item that HCD was included in a couple of city commission meetings back. I think there was probably about a $42,000 saving to the general fund. And then we had a small saving in a consolidation or maybe a shift in one of the positions for development services whereby they shifted the funding between the building and the general fund to reduce the general fund portion of it. So we're going to calculate those incremental decreases and see how much of a decrease or how much of an increase we will have in the operating budget. Another action would be to go back and reevaluate all of the program and services to see which of those would be recommended to eliminate or to scale them back. We've been operating to a great degree remotely. I think that gives us an opportunity to take a look at whether we are in a position to eliminate programs or services or scale them back. Again, unlike what we're currently doing right now, we're putting a freeze on travel and training. I'm going to be looking at proposing to eliminate travel and training out of the budget for certain operations. Reviewing all of our charges for services to see if we can bring an increase into the general fund. For example, going to analyze what the CRA pays for its support from the general fund. uh, what the CRA pays for its support from the general fund and make certain that that is appropriate, and if not, that would be increased. Uh, also take a look at whether we have functions that are appropriate to look at for outsourcing. Considering outsources always give me a pause in that you, you tend to, and I wanna emphasize tend, I'm not saying that this is the case in all cases, but you tend to get a very good, uh, price for outsourcing a function at the beginning, and then it begins to escalate. And at the end of some period of time, your outsourced cost is as high as what it would have been if you retained it inside. So I don't wanna put us into that kind of predicament. And then we're also going to.
And it's usually done on the backs of, uh, uh, of, of, of decreased personnel costs by the, uh, agency that comes in, which, which is.
Yes.
Just in geniuses.
Yes, and so you have to be very mindful of that when you look at functions, uh, to outsource. Uh, another.
That's very low on the, on, on, on the total.
Yes, and these are not, uh, necessarily in priority order, but that is very low on, on, on what I would, uh, consider and bring forward to the board. And then we have to look at, uh, the use of our fund balance reserves. If, after our best efforts, uh, based on direction, uh, from the mayor and the commission, we still are short uh, with what we're trying to cover for next year, uh, we may be in a situation where we have to use fund balance reserves. I'm gonna prepare you that that is going to be a challenge. We will review the numbers that we have for fund balance, and then you will understand uh, my comments about that being a challenge. So I'll pause right here.
Uh, we do have a question from Commissioner Naring.
Uh, thanks Mayor, and, uh, Ms. Johnson, I think you just mentioned it, which is at some point we'll be able to resume, uh, to review, uh, what the, the fund balance reserves are, uh, including, um, the, if you will, the best practice percentages as a city in terms of maintaining our rating and all of the things that go into that. Um, I, I'll just say this. I know that at least in the five years uh, that I've been on this commission, one of the things that we've talked about as it relates to budgeting is always keeping in mind, um, the housing crisis in, uh, twenty oh eight through twenty twelve, or, you know, that time where we had approximately sixteen hundred staff, and I think I've heard now maybe our FTEs is around eleven hundred. My point is, you know, the questions and the themes that always came up were, what are we doing so that not, um, if, but when the next crises happens that our, that we're putting our city in a better position, um, to take it on? Again, none of us could have predicted this, um, and we, it's a very fluid process and we're dealing with it. I, I'm really just making that statement as a theme because it is my hope at the end of this, um, while again, none of us would have maybe wanted this position that we're in, it's my hope that the last five years, we have been, um, or longer, uh, but at least since I've been on the commission, that we have been making adjustments knowing that at some point we would face, uh, an issue, maybe not to this scale, but we would be facing an issue. And maybe our cuts would, would not have to be as draconian, um, as maybe some other cities. So again, no, that's just a statement. Um, and going back to my initial, uh, point, um, I'm hoping at some point we'll have a chance to kinda see what those reserves are and then all the factors that go into that in terms of, uh, percentage and the amounts that are in those reserves. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Lambert.
If I, if I can.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. You wanna respond to that, Ms. Johnson? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, you know, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, be a wet blanket, and I don't have the historical perspective of what our city went through in two thousand eight and the expectation of how we would prepare moving forward uh, for a similar situation. But I would tell you and what you will see coming up, from my perspective, we are not prepared in terms of fund balance where we are going to be in an optimal position for fund balance to be able to deal with some of the challenges that we have moving forward. My second point is on the eleven, uh, hundred number that you heard for FTEs, keep in mind that those are the FTEs in the general fund. Our total FTE complement is right around seventeen hundred. That eleven hundred is the general fund only.
Okay, um, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Johnson, thank you for this slide. It's, it's good to see where we're looking at as far as finding places to, um, adjust our budget moving forward. I was just curious if or how technology is playing a part in any of this? And two years ago, when we went through some strategic planning process, with the previous administration, we really emphasized the use of technology in all of our departments to help us to be more efficient. And I was just curious if any of those implementations led us to being able to collect more revenue or have more cost savings?
I can't speak to that. Maybe somewhere from budget. I will make a note to follow up on that. I just don't have that history, so I'll let the budget manager and finance director speak to that.
Well, I know that what we spend a lot is on building the, uh, infrastructure security for our IT, and that, um, became costly, and now I believe they hired a number of individuals that used to be contractual, so that's actually saved. So the, um, like for instance, the IT budget, um, that actually went down this year because we no longer have to pay a certain debt service for all of the infrastructure needs that we had set aside. So with the contracts that we have, um, there are programs that came on to make us more efficient so we can work, um, actually at home like we're doing now um, in a way that we probably couldn't do as well five years ago if we not had those upgrades that have been put in place. So I don't, I, I can't really answer whether it made a difference on the revenue coming in or such like that, but I know it has with the increased personnel and the increase in services and construction and all the population and wonderful things. I think it kept the, um, employees down to a level where we can manage. Um, but yet there are increases, huge expenses because of those security needs that we need for our infrastructure.
Okay, that, that address your question, Commissioner Lambert?
Um, a little bit. I'll look to maybe follow up with Ms. Johnson afterwards if you find anything else.
I could, I could add, um, one, one, uh, for instance, and Ms. Johnson mentioned it in her presentation, finances, uh, i- i- in the process of implementing, uh, artificial intelligence and optical character recognition with our accounts payable, which will allow invoices to come into the city and be automatically read with, uh, the machine. And, uh, that will eliminate the need for two full FTEs, which we did not have. We were paying a temp agency. So that alone will eliminate just about two-hundred-thousand dollars a year. And, uh, the mayor, during the mayor's transition team meetings, all of the departments submitted what they called efficiency, uh, items where they saw that they could gain some efficiency. So we're gonna revisit those lists to see what the impact has been on some of the things that they had mentioned, and some of those were related to technology. Okay.
Thank you. That, that was, Mayor, that was definitely more in line of, of what I was thinking is, and not necessarily eliminating um, staff positions, but helping our staff to be able to be more efficient with their jobs so that they can get more done, uh, for the city. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, my dear.
Uh, Madam President Shof has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and this slide, I think, certainly sheds a lot of light on some of the earlier conversation that we were having. Part of what I'm trying to, to wrap my brain around is, um, you know, we're looking at an increased revenue. And so, uh, you know, I think the place where I'm more comfortable is looking at the sum of the whole. We've called out some items as, as being unfunded, but I think that's kind of like trying to determine which drop of water made the bucket overflow. You know, at the end of the day, these are all city costs. And so understanding this is a really tough job to go back through department by department and determine those need-to-haves versus want-to-haves, we have some really important things that, that need to be funded. I mean, specifically, our police and fire, you know, those are key public safety issues, which I think have been brought more to the forefront uh, over the past several months. Um, so are we going to take this rubric as outlined here and kind of revisit department by department and say, you know, where can we give a little here and there to add up to the sum of the whole? Um, understanding that departments have submitted budgets to be as, as lean as they can, but I think we've presented something that's kind of a, a new, um, ideology. So are we revisiting each department budget with this, this structure in mind?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll be able to just kinda see, um, those, those prioritizations department by department and be able to really lean down everything that we've got to see what portion is then still unfunded.
Yeah, what, what I plan on, uh, doing is after, excuse me, after I go back through this follow-up process with departments and identify where we can find cost savings based on any one or a combination of the various actions, that will bring us to a dollar amount. And then take a look at the items that are on the table that are not covered. I will always bring to the board, as your administrator, a balanced budget, irregardless of what step we are in the process. Along with that, a list of all of the items that were not included in the proposed balanced budget. And then it's up to the board, as the policymaking body of this commission, or of the city, to determine, Administrator Johnson, this item that you have in the proposed budget, we wanted to come out and then we want to add this particular item that was not in there. So we will go through that process. It's gonna be a very dynamic process. You, as the mayor and the commission, will have the opportunity to see at the end of this process what is not in there and then make those policy decisions on what you want to come out or what you want to come in. Now I say that to say this, based on what we have at the end of the day in revenue, for everything that is put in the proposed budget that you everything that is not in the proposed budget that you want in, something else has to come out. So you have to keep that in mind and be prepared that it's going to be a very dynamic process to get to the end of the day where you have that FY twenty-one balanced budget.
And I think, uh, Madam President, where, your, your question, uh, at least what I heard implicit in your question is whether the, uh, last year's budget was etched in stone, and the answer to that is no. Uh, that is a starting point, but we're, now, now that we have, uh, the, the, uh, state of affairs going forward, everything is on the table. So just because we started this analysis saying the last year's budget is what we're working from, that does not mean we're, that budget is etched in stone, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that clears it up for me. More what I was looking at is perhaps there was a need somewhere last year that we, we had the funding for, but this year we don't have that similar need, or given circumstances, there is a need that takes higher priority. And I'm more comfortable, uh, you know, now looking at this, taking a look, saying we are looking at what all those priorities were versus just saying, here's what we had last year, here's what's new this year. So we have to decide if we want what's new this year or not. You know, I guess I would argue that maybe there's some, some wiggle room within those other categories that we could find, um, various aspects of something that perhaps was relevant last year, not relevant this year, and that it could be absorbed. I just don't think that the, the newest cost in the door should be argued as that should be the only cost on, on the the list that is up for a decision one way or the other. I think there are some very important services that are in there that, you know, it, it's, it's all about the sum of the whole, not about last in, uh, last in the door. So I, I appreciate you.
Everything is on the table, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson, but everything is on the table.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, yeah, and, and if I didn't offerly explain that, let me clarify. Everything in terms of FY twenty-one is on the table, and that's at the board's discretion. We're using FY twenty-one because that's your base budget. That's what the mayor and the commission, as the policymaking body, approve for this year. And there are one of a number of ways that you can do a budget, and I wouldn't recommend any of these because we have a serious situation on our hands. You can start with just a zero base budget, where you throw everything out and just start from scratch. Or you can start with your base budget and look at all of those items. Look at items that were on the table that were not funded from last year or prior years. Look at new items and then decide how you want to reconfigure your base budget. What items you want out of your base for next year, what items you want in for next year. So that's the approach that I'm taking because I don't think that, uh, from a feasibility standpoint, we should go down this path where we're just going to take a scrap budget and rebuild it. Uh, because from my perspective, that's an exercise in futility.
Okay, um, I don't see any other questions, so con- continue, Ms. Johnson, please.
Thank you. So again, in terms of, of actions, and I, uh, consider these to be actions of last resort, hoping that we don't get to that, uh, but we have to at least consider the remote possibility. Uh, when, um, looking at staff furloughs, uh, I think, uh, we have read in, uh, the news media that, uh, Miramar immediately has put in furloughs across the board for a six-month period, one day a week, so that's two days of furlough within a paid period. Uh, North Miami has put in furloughs immediately for a four-month period of one day a week. Uh, we have not yet proposed, uh, that, but depending on where we end up for FY twenty-one, that is something potentially we may have to look at. Uh, salary reductions is another, uh, mechanism for reducing your budget. And certainly, if you're looking at staff layoffs, if you're talking about eliminating programs or scaling back programs, we hinted at that with the waterfront fund. And then another option would be, uh, consolidating departments. Through a department consolidation, you will end up with staff layoffs. And again, I'm hoping that those would be actions of last resort, uh, but we're early on in this process of getting our arms around FY twenty-one. And I'll pause here.
Uh, continue, no questions.
Alrighty. So we talked about fund balance, and there are five categories of fund balance, but for the purpose of today's work session, I'm going to focus on the unassigned because that fund balance money is what we have available to help fill a gap, fund one-time capital, because it has not been assigned by the board to a specific purpose. It's not restricted. Under our ordinance, uh, it requires that we maintain ten percent of our operating revenues, uh, the equivalent to ten percent of our operating revenue for emergency reserves. Our unassigned fund balance, uh, money has to be used before we use the emergency reserves. So it sort of protects the emergency reserves by using unassigned first. On the unassigned, uh, side of the equation, uh, we are required to maintain an equivalent of three percent of the operating, uh, revenue in unassigned fund balance reserves. If we were to, uh, move that, uh, unassigned fund balance money or to utilize it, it requires city commission approval. Uh, footnote that generally you use that for one-time expenditures such as capital and not for ongoing, uh, expenditures. And that's important that we only use fund balance because it's one-time money for one-time expenditures and not for ongoing expenditures. So in terms of for FY, uh, twenty-one, based on, uh, our, our budget, under the ordinance, we should have nineteen point five million in emergency reserves. Right now, our actual. Right now, our actual, if you look at uh the bottom number right now, we have fifteen point two million in emergency reserves. We should have nineteen million. That fifteen million may change based on the CAFRA, which we're are still waiting for that to be distributed, but I think that number is probably pretty close.
All right, all right, stop right there, stop stop right there. I thought you said under statute, we were required to have ten percent of our uh general fund.
Not under statute, under what the the city's ordinance.
All right, so under ordinance, we're required to have ten percent, right?
Yes, of your operating revenue.
In in emergency?
Yes.
How do we get so, how do we get so far below? We're like four million dollars below that 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 benchmark.
I need staff to, I don't have the history, so fi- uh budget can help me out.
So the the number that you're looking at is a budget number, the the uh emergency reserve is actually based on the actual, which is in the CAFRA. So the 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 budget number is typically higher than what is necessarily required. The other part of it is.
Oh, timeout, timeout. I'm just looking at this chart. It says nineteen million thirty-seven thousand uh is required. And it also says that fifteen million is actual. So how do, what what's the delta? What's the cause for the delta between required and actual?
Do we have fifteen million right now in reserves? Emergency reserves?
Right now in emergency reserves, we have sixteen million.
Okay, sixteen million.
Sixteen million right now, and that would be as of the last printed CAFRA. So the revenues are determined at the end of the year when we do the CAFRA, and that's when this calculation to determine the different categories for the reserves at that point. Moving forward, the number of nineteen million is based on the budget, the projection. Typically, we don't project out the uh emergency reserve number, I mean, uh because it changes literally every day.
I'm looking at the current budget, I'm not looking at projected. I'm looking at the current budget. Fiscal year twenty current says nineteen million dollars is required.
Okay.
We only have sixteen million dollars there, so somebody explain to me how the delta, that's all I'm asking.
Well, the other part, the other part is that we still have unassigned dollars.
Okay, we're not talking about unassigned. Let's just talk, let's deal with it.
Hard question. But so I think that the 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 confusion comes in, it's not like we have a bank account that is for emergency reserves and there's nineteen million dollars in that account. The whole fund balance is one big number, and at the end of the year for reporting, we break it down into these different categories. So if we have, I mean, if we estimated that the um emergency number was nineteen million, we have the sixteen million plus we can bring in that additional three million from unassigned to make that number meet the emergency calculation.
Okay, so so so, all right, so so yeah, e- even if we do that, that we're talking about maybe tapping into unassigned, so that makes the the amount available to tap into even less, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
So uh Mayor, how you are understanding the numbers is in fact the case. Now, we can go through the maturation of 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 how the total number is and the breakout of it. We had five categories for fund balance, but when you look at, based on the ordinance for emergency reserves, the ten percent equivalent of our operating revenues is that top number. And what Mr. Parks has said, what we actually have for emergency reserves is the sixteen million. That was at the end of last fiscal year. Based on my footnote, we're still waiting to get the CAFRA to see if it confirms that sixteen million or is it some higher number? If it's the sixteen million, there is a delta between what we should have based on the ordinance and what we actually have. So the question is, how did we not get to nineteen million?
Well, there are two questions. There are two questions. And 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 we could do offline with both of these, but the the the, yeah, that that question is one, how there get to be such a significant delta uh between actual and required on emergency reserves? And then the second one is, does that mean that this eight point one million in unassigned fund balance is really three million dollars less because of the delta on emergency?
It could be if the if the board elect to take three million from the unassigned or the fund balance reserve and put in the emergency reserves. However, you're gonna be challenged with doing that in that we have to keep in mind that we are anticipating about a million dollars from COVID nineteen that we're gonna have to absorb from fund balance. We're also anticipating a one point five million dollars this year for fire overtime that we would have to absorb from your fund balance reserve. So that brings that down. Once we get the CAFRA and know what that real number is, the board still may be in a position to take three million to add to the emergency reserves and then look at whatever that bottom line number is, what portion of that you want to utilize to fund some of the one-time capital items. So the CAFRA was supposed to be uh distributed back in March. I think it's it's ready to be distributed. Uh we should have that coming out this week and then we will have the actual number of where we stand with the emergency reserves and the fund balance reserves, but I think those numbers are pretty close. We may have a couple of more million in the fund balance reserves, but it's not going to be uh double that amount, so we need to just prepare for that.
Oh, okay, we we have to have some o- o- offline conversations because this this is uh very troubling to me. I don't know how we got here, but anyway, okay, finish your presentation.
Okay, this is just a copy of the uh budget uh schedule that we put together. I just noted that uh we have dialed in here uh community meetings, you know, and dates and locations to be determined. I know our practice in the past has been that we've had a community budget meeting in every district. Uh we're not gonna be in a position to do that, given that we're now are in this world of COVID nineteen and virtual uh meetings and we may be coming out of this, so that may still be a possibility. Uh whether or not, we still want to go with five meetings, that's something for the board to think about. The other point that I wanted to uh highlight here is that the next mayor uh commission budget work session is uh for is planned for July sixth. I am recommending that we have um additional budget work sessions before July sixth and to uh follow up with the uh commission and and input from the mayor on working in some dates uh so that we can continue to uh uh inform everyone of how the budget picture looks based on the preliminary values and the additional work that we're gonna go back and do. I think it's just such a delicate position that I don't want to wait until July sixth for us to come back together and have a budget work session. The next fund that we need to have a focused budget work session on is the parking fund because it's being hit uh significantly. Uh if we go back to one of the earlier slides, the parking fund uh contributes about a half a million dollars in um admin fees to the general fund. Uh it's questionable whether or not they're gonna be in a position to do that. So I want to have a focused discussion on the parking fund so that the board will have a sense of what that looks like. So that's something that we need to be thinking about uh here. So in terms of.
I agree with you, the timing uh in in light of some of these very critical decisions that that have to be made, um uh I I would like for us to have as much information as soon as possible as you start drilling down into the departments and into priorities, et cetera, because that's gonna require a conversation, uh uh some deliver, some extensive deliberations at at commission level. So no, I agree with you, not waiting until July sixth for for the next one.
Okay. Mayor, I had a question before.
I understand Commissioner Lambert, just a minute, just a minute. Uh so I agree that we shouldn't wait till then. All right, Commissioner Lambert, yes.
Thanks, Mayor, sorry about that. Thought we were moving on to the next slide.
No, we're not.
Just wanted uh Ms. Johnson to um ask you a little bit about the community meetings um and just Mayor um ask that, I know that that we have a a, I don't know, it's not redefined, uh um we're that, based on the changes that you've made in the mayor's office, that our community outreach department has kind of changed recently and just would ask that that department take a look at these meetings because I know that in the past few that I've been involved with, some of the reoccurring um comments that I've heard from the community is that by the time we come to the community in July with these budgets, that they're already baked. And if if that is the case, then I think that that's the messaging we need to put out there, but the messaging that I've seen in the past has been, we want your input, we want to know what you think, and then they show up with ideas and they feel like they're not being heard.
Yeah, we we could take a look at those. We'll have uh community engagement, uh which is now under HCD, uh take a look at those. Uh frankly, given this climate, uh where where there's not gonna be a lot of uh extra money laying around to uh appease any neighborhood's wish list, uh it it's probably gonna be as straightforward as this has been. Uh this is where we are, uh and this is what we have to do. But yes, we will certainly have uh community engagement that look at uh the proper way to to deal with those meetings.
And if 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 I could, and 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 Mayor, you all feel, you all feel completely comfortable with putting me back on the right side of the line. I will tell you that as your city administrator, I am completely uncomfortable turning over a budget discussion to the community, to community engagement. You know, as your administrator, I believe that one of my priority duties and responsibilities is to present a balanced budget to the board. So I am looking that I am going to be the one out in the community and community engagement is welcome to be to join me during the presentation to the community. I cannot support turning it over to community engagement.
I said they will be involved, not turning it over, okay?
Okay, all right.
You will be the lead, Ms. Johnson. I'm not, I'm not taking it away from you. You will be the lead. They 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 will, they will play a part and 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 some of it may be uh using some of the technology that I know that they've been using uh as they solicit a community uh uh input on issues. I I'm not saying that uh you know, they're gonna run the show. Uh we can take advantage of some of their skill sets, but no, this is your deal, uh your and your department's deal, okay?
Okay, I can exhale now and start breathing again.
I can't see you over there, so I I don't know if your head's exploded or not, because I can't.
No, but I I I was.
But I hope it is not. I hope it is not, but it's not my.
I I I was hyperventilating and by design I have me off camera because I don't want you all seeing my reactions.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, may I follow up on that?
Yes, absolutely.
And I completely agree with you, Mayor, and and Ms. Johnson, of course, you know, I think that the subject matter experts should be the one delivering the message. Um I I just believe that our community engagement team might have um, you know, ideas for doing community outreach during COVID and even beyond um COVID and and reaching out to the community as well. I really appreciate what you're saying is that you want to be forthright with our residents and I think that they would welcome that, they want that, they expect that, and I think that having a very honest conversation with them about where we are with our budget, the hard decisions we've had to make, I I believe is what they want to be a part of, at least I can speak for the residents that I've spoken to in in District Five.
Okay, uh Madam President, Shoff, you had a comment on this.
Um thank you, Mayor. Uh I too have been at those budget meetings and I think it would be really important to have that that candid conversation. In tandem with that, sometimes in those community conversations, what gets confused is operational budget versus capital budget. And on that subject, I think it would, it would behoove us that while we have the community engaged, if there was also a tandem presentation about capital projects, perhaps by district that gave an update, there may be a a way to to help um mentally designate tho- those two budgets um and that way give kind of an update a- at the same time. Uh as it pertains to this conversation, I heard Administrator Johnson referenced earlier some of those considerations that have been made, which I think I would encourage now on the board to say, what is an operational cost, Allah, having security stand guard at a gate versus switching that to a capital cost, having the gates replaced and having that that be amortized over time? So I would be encouraging of of that happening down the line. And then my last comment was um in regard to reserves, if we could get some clarification down the line too, I was looking at at last year's um budgets for reserves and I think it was presented in three different categories, non-spendable, reserves and available. And it it would appear that the the slide that we have here didn't cover all of those categories, which would would make up for for some of the discrepancies that we're seeing. And I know you've asked for an offline conversation, I just wanted to put that on record as I had looked back at last year's and I think there may just be some um discrepancies in in how the data was presented that we could get some clarification on.
Yeah, yeah, but what what is not, what what is not etched in stone is the way they did the budget last year, okay? So w- we're not, that's not our starting point. Our starting point is the information that 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 we're using today and 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 trying to distinguish, but I'm not gonna try to do do a a a a comparison of what we're hearing today with what happened in last year's budget and that, and I'm not gonna be stuck with that prototype. That's not the prototype I want to work from going forward.
Understood, Mayor, and I appreciate that. I'm I'm talking specifically as it pertains to the reserves um and just to understand, uh you know, I think there was just some some difference in interpretation of 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 how that was. Uh I am fully in support of not having to do things the way we always did them because that's the way we we have done them, uh just pointing out that I think that it it can be further clarified. Thank you.
And if if I could, Mayor, just add a footnote, and I I appreciate, I appreciate the mayor and the commission and the staff, you all are dealing, you know, with a new administrator, a different style and way of doing things. So, you know, if there is something in how I'm presenting it that is confusing, I appreciate hearing that because I believe in foremost clarity. On that point about fund balance, President Shoff, if you look at the five categories, non-spendable relates to asset that has a value, but that has no relevance in terms of money that is available for the board to use to help with the budget gap. So as you look at last year and you look at the CAFRA, you may see a rolled up number for fund balance that will include the value for non-spendable, the value for restricted, the value for committed. That's not incorporated in the nineteen million or the eight million that I've just walked you through. For the purpose of this work session, I'm focusing on unassigned because that's where if we have any ability to find fund balance dollars to help with one-time expenses, it's in unassigned. You don't have the ability to take the value from non-spendable to help with balancing your budget. So that's why the numbers look different from perhaps what you are recalling.
Thank you, Administrator, and I understand, and and I think that's the exact point that I was trying trying to make, is that as it pertains to the overall ten percent, there is a a a number that's unrepresented in here, and I understand for what purpose. Uh it was just for a point of clarification, as I know the public is watching here, um and I wanted to just make that distinction. So I I'm sure we will have a further presentation and discussion on this, just to make sure that we're um clear on everything. Thank you.
All right, next steps, Ms. Johnson.
I am coming to the end. So part of what has been intimated by different commissioners, you know, is whether or not the budget that we have in place now is set in stone, uh how we're going to move forward at the board's direction. If there are actions that you all have just heard that you want taken off the table, I'm looking for you to give me that direction. If you don't want me to consider department consolidations, if you don't want me to consider eliminating non-strategic travel and training, that's the kind of direction that I'm looking that's the kind of direction that I'm looking for the board to give me. If there are new actions to help us through this process that we have not yet identified, that you want to be considered, I'm looking for you to give me that. It doesn't have to be today, but you can do that in follow-up. We've already talked about having more budget work sessions, and we've already talked about the scheduling of community meetings. So again, I'm looking for direction from the mayor and the board on what you want off the table in terms of actions to consider. And if there are new actions that we've not thought of, that you are aware of, that you want us to consider, we're looking for that kind of input. Again, not necessarily now, but if you have it now, we certainly will take it. Or in follow-up via an email or a phone call, if you would get that input to me, we will be happy to take that into consideration as we move forward with looking at the operating budget.
Right. Before you could take, oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, Ms. Johnson. Uh, Commissioner Neering has, has a comment as well.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for this, uh, broad, broad stroke. I mean, it is, um, further complicated, right? Um, given, given the situation that we're in and definitely a heavy lift. I appreciate you kind of walking us through it. I, I, I think for me, um, you know, and you've already listed it in terms of, uh, as a possible action, but in terms of a last resort, which I totally agree, which is around staff furloughs, salary reductions and all those things. So I, I'm 100% in agreement, uh, with that. Um, the piece that I, or the point that I will make is one that I think I've heard both from the mayor and, and, and other commissioners in different ways, which is, um, you know, communication, um, i- i- is, is going to be paramount. Not, not, not just for the community, but also for our staff. And so I know that this is a fluid situation, um, and that probably is held more at the director's level. Um, and it's not necessarily my, my job to get into the weeds in terms of how, um, uh, the staff receives this information. But I will just, you know, again, just, um, lift up for all of us. And again, I've heard it, so I know that, I think we're all in agreement on this, is that more communication, um, especially in a crisis, is, um, becomes a priority. So that point, as it relates to the community, obviously, um, no matter where we land, and I know Commissioner Lambert has been, uh, a huge advocate around figuring out what our community meetings look like um, and moving forward, what I will say is, um, no matter where we land on that, whether it's more of a presentation style, Mayor, as you suggested, and I, I don't disagree with that, um, it, it's just getting it out, you know? And, and especially now, given that, uh, we are not going to be able to, you know, host mu- meetings at community park, um, you know, with 150 people in attendance. That doesn't seem like that's going to be possible in the next three, four months. And so, um, just knowing that you have my support, obviously, as one commissioner, and making sure whatever we can do to get that information out. However, I can help as a commissioner to get that information out. Um, I am there. But I think, again, to your point, um, Ms. Johnson, and I'll definitely, uh, mull over and, and get back to you. But I'm appreciative as, uh, in terms of actions of last resort that we have, uh, the four, uh, highlighted, uh, items. Um, and I see those as kind of, uh, truly 12-hour decisions and not anything that, uh, that is on the table for me, at least at this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue, Ms. Johnson.
That concludes my presentation, Mayor. I'll turn it over to you and the board for discussion and direction.
All right, um, when, uh, you'll get back to us then with a, 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 a proposed date for the next, uh, workshop? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, commissioners, any, uh, further questions? Uh, we, we do have our work cut out for us. So, uh, Commissioner Paduzzi, I see that you have a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've, I've been rather quiet here, just taking it all in. I think we do have a daunting task in front of us. Um, my thoughts are that everything should remain on, on the table as a consideration. Um, you know, at least to be considered, uh, with the exception, um, to those things that directly impact public safety. Um, obviously, I mean, I still, it's, it's may not be the time, but we need to certainly consider the fact that we've talked for some time about getting our public safety officers uh, up to the county, uh, level of, of, uh, of pay. Um, we also have indicated that we want to see a reduction in our mileage rate. So these are all considerations that we need to keep in mind. I know now is probably not even the time to talk about those things. Um, but I think everything that is potentially a cost savings needs to be on the table.
All right, very good. Um, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and to, and to all the staff who worked on putting this presentation together. It was very digestible and comprehensive, and I really appreciate that because I, I know that there's a lot of information that went into this. Um, just regarding your request for direction, I also agree that, you know, in this early stage of budgeting, that, you know, everything is on the table, and I look forward to hearing your, um, suggestions, the research that you have, um, come up with from talking to each of the departments and new actions that we might be able to consider. And that being said, I, um, certainly understand the amount of time that it takes to put this together for a budget workshop. But Mayor, I was just, um, wondering if you would be amenable to, even if it's a just two to five-minute verbal update, no presentations at each of our workshops, just letting us know how things are progressing so that we don't wait, you know, a month until the next update?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, tha- that's a very good, uh, point. We can get, uh, uh, an update. Uh, you mean at, at each, uh, meeting or, or each, uh, yeah. Uh, Ms. Johnson, make a note of that. Maybe we could get a budget update, if you will, as a, uh, 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 as a discussion item at, at any future commission meetings and, uh, uh, mayor commission workshops.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Fox?
Um, thank you so much. So I just have one question. I don't, you know, think we're anywhere near going, um, to touch our emergency reserves. But I was just curious, um, I was just curious if there was anything in the ordinance about what the emergency reserves would be used for. I mean, you know, in a time of pandemic, is that, you know, considered an emergency or? I mean, I don't think that we're anywhere near that. I was just curious if someone had, um, what explanation about that.
Uh, Madam City Attorney, do you have any, uh, expertise or maybe someone in finance?
You have to use the unassigned.
Madam City Attorney, yeah.
Yeah, I-
Hey, hey, uh, Ms. Johnson, mute your, mute your microphone.
I'm sorry. Uh, I have it pulled up. It says, emergencies shall be limited to disasters, unanticipated economic downturns, one-time opportunities and other needs determined to be useful and infrequent by nature, in nature by the city commission. So it's, it's, it probably would cover these circumstances.
Pandemic, I think, would, would fall within that. Okay. Uh, Madam President Schoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to respond to Administrator Johnson. And again, say thank you, Mayor, your staff, Administrator Johnson. This is a huge task to undertake, and I know it's not an easy job from here. In the early stages of this, I think everything you've presented has been, um, should be fully considered as a very professional approach at how, how we're taking a look at this. Um, I, I would concur with Commissioner Neering. I think we do have some options of last resort. I personally, as, as part of this commission, would like to see us make our best and m- most, um, aggressive efforts to keep the staff that we have employed, employed. I think that's extremely important in this time where we have high unemployment and an employment system that's struggling to the extent that we can keep our staff currently employed, still employed. I think that is the priority for me. So I know we're very early in this, um, a- and there will be things about the COVID situation that even changes amongst this budget discussion. And that puts a new element of change in here that you wouldn't typically have during a budget year. So, um, I trust that, that you all will take a hard look at all of those options and continually update us and, and present us with, um, what you think is the best direction going forward. So thank you again. I know the hard work is just beginning on this, and I'll look forward to, uh, having more discussions on it. Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Neering?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Johnson, I just had a quick question. And again, I, I realize that this is, it's, it's fluid, so it, it's changing. Was it, is it the thought that we are approximately, um, the delta, if you will, is about 10.6 million dollars? And that's without the union negotiations? And again, that's assuming we get the grant, which would be great, but the grant for the, um, 30 police officers, the 28 firefighters, because that's roughly 1.8 million. But are we talking at a starting point about 10.6 million plus whatever the union negotiations are? Is it, so is it, is, are those the numbers that, you know, approximately that we're dealing, dealing with in terms of the delta?
Yes, but I think it's important to break that, uh, 10.6 million into operating and then one-time e- expenses. So on the operational side, about 5.3 so million plus whatever would come out of union negotiations because that would be operation and ongoing. And then the one-time cost would be that other 5.6 million or so. So yes.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Um, uh, but by the way, Commissioner Paduzzi, it is still my desire to move our police and fire up higher, uh, in the rankings in the county. Um, that's my desire, but whether we can get there or not, but that's certainly our intent because it, it, it helps them as they do recruiting, et cetera. So we're going to continue to work on that as part of the negotiations and see where that, if there's any money that we can apply to that. But that's, that's the intent. Uh, I don't see any other questions, comments? I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Uh, my hat's off to you, um, uh, Ms. Johnson, for you and your team. I think this has been a very comprehensive, uh, but a very, uh, descriptive, uh, presentation. Uh, and it lays it out there. Uh, ain't pretty, uh, but it is what it is. And, uh, it was, uh, very easily, as I think some, one commissioner said, very easily digestible. Uh, it is very clear, uh, the, the task that we have at hand. Uh, so kudos to, to you and your team, uh, for putting together a presentation that is very helpful uh, as a starting point, and it lays it out there. And commissioners, uh, we have our work cut out for us with the assistance of, of staff, obviously. And we'll continue to look for ways to sharpen the pencil, uh, and, and hone in. Uh, but, uh, these are indeed challenging times at, at a number of different levels. So if I don't hear any other questions or comments, I will, uh, move to adjourn this meeting. Uh, thank you all very much for your time, and, uh, we'll, we will keep you updated as we, as we move down this path.